Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, really glad you're here today.
We are, we are so glad to also have Julie and Colin here from our team. Hey guys.
Hello.
So what's going on everybody?
So today we are kicking off the first in a series of trainings, a workshop if you will, a four-part workshop on what it looks like to build and grow your business pipeline as a Young Living brand partner. We're going to be focusing on a couple of simple and effective tools that we've developed for you inside of your Get Oiling system. We have resources that we're sharing to that end today. Today we're going to take a big sort of high-level overview of what we'll be getting into over the next four weeks. And of course, we will dive into the first phase of your pipeline, which is relationship building. So without further ado, let's get into our slides. We're going to hop out a video. You guys head into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. We have so many incredible brand partners as part of our community all over the world. And of course, we are always so excited to meet you, see what's working, where you are, and of course, help you grow your business with Get Oiling. If you're new to Get Oiling and all the things that we do, welcome. We're so excited to have you here. We actually have an incredible platform that is built for you as a brand partner. It's built by brand partners for brand partners. And we're just so thrilled to be a part of your journey, helping you get oils into every home. And of course, also supporting the other amazing things that you do. If you do something more than oils or something alongside your oils, maybe you're a practitioner, maybe you're a coach, et cetera. Let us know that in the chat as well. We're always excited to hear what that looks like. There's so much you can do with your Get Oiling platform. But right now, today, we are focusing on the most important part of your business, and that is your relationships. As a network marketer, as someone who gets financially rewarded for helping to distribute products through networks of people, the most important asset that you have is your reputation and the relationships connected to it. So we are going to be talking about creating those relationships and building those here today. So the conversations that you have that ultimately lead to you showing and telling about Young Living. Alright, so today, like I mentioned at the top of the call, we will get into an overview of this workshop series. We'll talk about what this week and the coming additional three weeks are going to look like. We're going to talk about the resources that we have prepared for you. We are going to get into today's content, which is about relationship building. And of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. This is a great opportunity for you, no matter what stage you are at in your business, or even with working with Get Oiling, this is a great opportunity for you to get hands-on support. We've got a number of different ways you can do that. And our live Thursday calls are the first way that we started offering this years ago. So again, I hope that you take advantage of the opportunity here today. We are here to help you. You've got the guy who built the platform and two of the smartest people I know alongside him, who are here on this call to help you. So if you have questions, go ahead and ask them. You can put those in the Q and A here on Zoom. And if you're watching this as a replay on our YouTube channel, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be able to hop on a live Zoom, just like the one we're on now. Meet these incredible people from Central Florida, South Texas, Oklahoma City, Philly, New York, Louisiana, Phoenix, Arizona. We've got folks from all over on our calls here and often from all over the world. So we hope that you'll come and join us on one of these live calls. What's up you guys in the chat? Keep it coming. Excited to see you. Now, if you would like to work together on a live call, like we are doing here today, if you would like to reserve space, we actually save space in the second half of these calls for this very purpose. Go to getoiling.com/web site review. No matter what you're working on or what questions you have about your Get Oiling system, this is a free opportunity for you as a member of our community to get hands-on help and support. We can work on things together in your account. We can discuss strategy, whatever that looks like. And if you would like to just hand off the work, if you want someone else to just get stuff done for you, we can do that too. Getoiling.com/concierge is where you want to go to learn about our team, the projects that they've done, and of course, figure out what your project might be and set up a call. So let's talk about this, you guys. We're going to talk about the brand partner pipeline. This is the focus of this four-part series. And a pipeline, if you, you know, aren't from the sales world, or this is something that's fairly new to you, the pipeline is really figuring out what the flow of opportunity looks like toward the ability for people to grow in your business, right? So it's basically you getting leads lined up so that you can show and share and tell, and then of course, getting those folks on the right track as customers. So what this looks like is the first phase is relationship building. This is the most important phase, I would say, and there is an element of this that continues even after you have signed someone up, right? So relationship building, because relationships are the most important asset for your business, this is the most important phase of this process, right? Then there is a phase, and this is what I consider a make or break, the consultative shift. We'll get into what all of this means, of course, in depth. We're going to be going over each week. One of these concepts, this week is relationship building. Next week, we're going to talk about the consultative shift. That's essentially what happens when an opportunity is recognized, right? So when you are building a relationship with someone, you don't necessarily have an opening right away. And even if you did, it might not be a good idea right away to jump at an opportunity to potentially put Young Living in front of someone, right? We want to know what the right opportunity looks like so that we can take the right steps. In that second stage, where we are taking those right steps to share is our consultative shift. Then we have the phase from when we share to when we sign up. And then finally, we've got our new customers. So we've got up to the point of product in hand, and then up to the point of developing a hero product, right? So figuring out what our can't live without product or products are. So the pipeline basically looks like this. We have this sort of circular structure here because this doesn't necessarily work in a straight line. So we begin with relationship building. This is where we are connecting, wherever it is that you naturally are connecting with these individual people. With some, you may, you know, be Facebook friends with them and you've never connected with them any other way. Maybe there's someone who, you know, visits the same house of worship that you do, and it's someone you know in that congregation. It may be that this is someone that you text because you speak to them regularly, whatever that looks like. Relationship building is the process of you interacting on a consistent basis with this person, showing up, being present, being authentic, and listening closely for the point of disclosure. And that point of disclosure is where someone shares something typically vulnerable with you. Or they share something, maybe it's not necessarily super vulnerable, but it is where that sort of oily spidey sense pops up and says, oh, I got an oil for that, right? The point of disclosure is where someone says, man, I really wish I could, or I've been struggling with, or I've been working on, right? That's where you get to that point. Now, the point of disclosure does not appear unless you have built the relationship, right? And definitely 100%, the consultative shift in the conversation does not work if we haven't built the relationship well. And that's why you see this, this sort of circle happening here. Because there are times where, when we take this consultative shift and we say, hey, you know, that thing you were telling me about, I actually have something that you might want to check out. If they aren't open to it, or the response is lukewarm, you're going back into relationship building and looking for another point of disclosure that wasn't the one for them, right? So this is a sort of cyclical thing. And then when that consultative shift works and they say, yeah, I'd love to know more about that. Yes, I'd love to go to your class, et cetera. That's when you are then teed up to be able to share, of course, and then close. And look, this doesn't stop when you sign somebody up. There is a relationship building process here as well, except now that they're a customer, we are focused around goals and accountability. So why did they say yes to Young Living? What is the goal that they have for using these products? You're going to be in touch with them on a consistent basis in order to make sure that they are using products, that they ought to be using, trying new products that they ought to be trying, and of course, staying accountable to the goals that they shared with you. So you are effectively kind of showing up as a coach in that first 90-day period at least. You're going to be helping to guide them toward new product experiences where they can start to see results and ideally discover a hero product, one or more hero products, a product that they are absolutely in love with, that they maybe have some kind of incredible story around, how it's made some kind of a shift for them. And that is something, a story that that could be worth sharing, right? Where they might be open to sharing that hero product story with someone they know who might benefit similarly to them. And of course, from there, they get bit by the bug and they become a brand partner and build a business with you, right? So this is really similar, these two structures. And so these, these are the pipelines that we're looking at here. We are talking about this as one pipeline, but essentially, we're talking about the pipeline from lead to customer, and then from customer to absolutely in love with product, maybe open to sharing and becoming a brand partner, right? Alright, now the problem with this. This all makes sense, right? Right? Pop your hand up for me. Are we following? Is this making sense? We, we've kind of outlined the structure of our business pipeline, what it looks like to get you to the point of customer, and what it looks like to get someone to the point of being in love with the product we're sharing just makes sense to them. So if this is making sense, let me know. What does this look like for you? If you get this, this isn't hard, right? Why isn't it happening for you? Right? I think that the problem is just remembering to do all the things and showing up at the right time, right? What does it look like for you? If it makes logical sense to you, where do you feel like you're dropping the ball? Or is it that you're dropping the ball that this isn't getting done? Because there's so many other things that we need to do, right? And, and we are at different stages of serving people. Like with every single person that's in your contact manager, you are at a different stage of working with them, right? They need to be followed up with every second Thursday, you know, in a month that ends in R, or right? Like every person has a different cadence with you, has a different need. And we as humans are accustomed to just stuffing all of that stuff in our brains and believing that we can just manage it all. It's difficult enough to manage what's in your household, or what's just in your own personal being, right? Much less managing what it looks like to be at different stages and processes with dozens or even hundreds or thousands of people at a time, right? The difficulty is, is just being able to do all of these things because you have to remember, right? And you need to remember it relative to what that person needs, and that's just a lot, right? So the solution is to use your Get Oiling Contact Manager. The solution is to use that one thing that is going to get you your money's worth out of your Get Oiling subscription, no matter what plan level you are on. That contact manager is going to help you grow your business. And then all of the amazing other things you can do with us are, you know, absolutely great and worth every penny as well. But if you aren't doing these things, do you have a young living business, right? So the solution here is we need to have prompts that tell us what to do, when to do it, so that we can get it all done, right? So if you were managing relationships with 37 people, and some are leads and some are customers, but some are old customers, some are new customers, and some are leads that you know well, and some you don't know so well, you need to remember what to do and when to do it. So if your system was able to say, hey, today, you need to follow up with this activity on this person, this activity with this person, this activity with that person, you would probably get it done, right? If you just showed up and you said, okay, here's a list, I gotta do all these things today. That would be amazing, right? So in Get Oiling, we get this done with a thing called follow-up plans. Now, follow-up plans are just to-dos. It's actions that you take. These are, a follow-up plan is a thing that you apply to a, a lead or customer, a contact in your system, and you will get prompts to do things, right? And the follow-up plans are a way for you to streamline. It's a system. So if you have a set of to-dos for someone who is a new customer in their first week, right? Like up to the point of them having product in hand, here are the things that you need to do. You want to make sure you do that the exact same way with every single customer. A follow-up plan is what's going to help you do that. So we are going to be executing this strategy with follow-up plans as the core piece. But what we're going to do, taking this a step further, is we're going to be using automations. Now, automations, and Allison, to your point here in the chat, if you get behind and have 30-plus past to-dos on a contact, this is what we're going to be using, like that this combination of follow-up plans with automations is what's going to keep this really clean, right? And I'll show you what that looks like here in just a bit. But first, your resources. I did email these to you guys if you're on our list. But, but, but definitely make sure that you grab this. Guys, if we could pop this into the chat, just in case anybody hasn't gotten it yet, have you guys downloaded this yet? If you are a part of the live launch of Marketing Mastery, then this is something that should be familiar for you. But bonus, that first 90 days automation did not exist back then. So pretty please, make sure you grab this if you've not done so already, alright? So grab this resource bundle. It is a series of automations. There are five of them. The last two we'll use together, the new customer checklist and first 90 days. We'll be focusing that in our final call on this series. So why are we using automations, right? Because we are, follow-up plans are the primary function here. So we've got our different phases, right? We've got to go from relationship building to the consultative shift, sharing to sign up to our new customer, right? This makes sense. Why would we use automations? Well, it's because relationships aren't linear, right? It's because, like I mentioned earlier, when I showed you that little circle, sometimes you have to go back to the beginning, right? Sometimes you get to a point where maybe somebody, you know, said they might want to come to a class, and you just so thought they would come to a class, and then they didn't, and you haven't heard from them, and they're not responding readily. That means you gotta go back to the relationship building drawing board, right? And so at each stage, if we just treated these as follow-up plans, you would have all of the to-dos for the relationship building there when you're getting them started as a new customer, right? So automations allow us to not just add these new follow-up plans, but also to remove the old ones, right? So if there are things that you no longer need to do because you are now in a different stage in your pipeline, the automation is going to take care of that for you. For instance, for the relationship building automation that we're going to be focusing on today, we are going to be, when we apply this to a contact, you're going to see that they're going to have a new tag as well. And that new tag, I believe, is Young Living Lead. Now, when that person becomes a new customer, and this is something that we'll look at here in a couple of weeks, when we apply that new customer automation, it's going to remove all of these to-dos from before, because we don't need to do them anymore, because that's a customer. We don't need to be doing all the prospecting stuff. But it's also going to change their tag, because they're no longer in a Young Living Lead, they're a Young Living Customer, right? So that's why we're using automation. So in an ideal world, all of this would be this simple, right? This is the stuff that makes logical sense to you. It is a nice, easy, logical flow from one stage to another. But let's get real, we are juggling not walking a straight line, right? We can walk and chew gum, but can you walk and juggle 37 balls in the air at the same time? Spend 37 plates in the air at the same time? Most of us cannot, right? If you can, you probably have a career in the circus, and I want tickets. You should be on Broadway and I will go see you, alright? So just remember, these are the stages, because this is like, part of the problem with being able to manage this whole process is that we can't remember everything that we need to do all the time. This is all I want you to remember, okay? Stages. First, relationship building. This is where we are communicating, showing up authentically, up to that point of disclosure, up to the point where someone has shared something with us in confidence, in trust, that we see as an opportunity to show up and serve, right? To be able to potentially say, there's an oil for that, or I know about something that might be able to help you, right? The next stage, consultative shift. This is when we are inviting, after that point of disclosure, that is the process of what it looks like to then go and invite to show and share. Then we have the actual sharing, right? Because sharing isn't just sending a link. There are things that we need to do. So there's a process to invite, there's a process to share and sign up, right? And then there's the process with the new customer checklist, that's up to the point that they have their product in hand. And then in their first 90 days, that's up to the point that they have discovered their hero product and the hero story that's going to change their life, and of course, keep them a Young Living Customer forever, okay? These are the stages. This is all I want you to remember, is that after relationship building is when we shift into consultation mode. After that, it's time to share. After that, we've got a checklist to make sure they get started right, and that they're prepared when they have product in hand to start using it. And then in that first 90 days, we need to follow the sequence, that of course, we'll talk about in a later training, that will ensure that your person not only uses product, but keeps using product and keeps using product, and eventually wants to share, just like you do, okay? So our goals from all of this are to have mutually fulfilling conversations and relationships with tons and tons and tons of awesome people that we love spending time with and communicating with. If this is not a goal that you have, we might be in the wrong business, alright? Our first goal is to have mutually fulfilling conversations and relationships with tons of people, because this is a relationship business, okay? Our next goal is just as important as the first, and that is to listen more than we speak. We have two ears in one mouth. So we are showing up on purpose to listen. And in order to listen, we gotta be able to ask a lot of good questions. I'll get into that in a bit. We also want to make sure that we are really clear that we have a goal to be able to understand what opportunity looks like. And it is not classic opportunism. It's not leaping at that first spidey sense of there's an oil for that. It's being able to understand when, using discretion, right? Being, being mindful of the person that you're connecting with, being able to understand what that opportunity looks like, so that you can conduct yourself accordingly to preserve the relationship and serve to your utmost ability, and to share with them in such a way that that person isn't just saying yes to product, they're saying yes to a new way of living. And then ultimately, when they say yes, for them to fall in love with products that they could never see themselves not having every month for the rest of their life, right? Can we agree that these are our goals? If these are our goals, if this is you, you're going to love this. I'm about to absolutely simplify the way you run your business with this resource bundle that you've just claimed, alright? So let's go put this to work. Let's talk about relationship building, and then I'm going to actually go show you how you can apply this automation to your contacts in your Get Oiling system, and show you what it looks like to manage this ongoing, okay? So first, what is relationship building? This is you showing up and being present, and genuinely adding value to the people you're connected to, right? This is, this is you checking in. It's you knowing someone's birthday and saying happy birthday. This is actually one of the simplest things you can do. If you're on Facebook, for instance, where birthdays are often something that's shared, make a point. Anytime you're logged into Facebook, see whose birthday is today and go post something nice on their wall. Make a point to do that. That's, that keeps you, you know, doing good things, making people feel good about themselves. And of course, that's also going to do some fun things for the algorithm. We'll talk about that kind of stuff in another training. But remember also, just put this hat on, even if your goal, your stated goal to yourselves, that you have written on your vision board, is that you are going to reach a certain number in your PV, and you are going to get this number of, of contacts and connects and customers. When you're communicating with somebody, I want you to put on a slightly different hat, right? I know that you're running to grow your business, but the way that we grow our business is not to sell. It's to serve. It's to create and engage correctly with opportunities to serve people that are looking for a solution, right? They're looking for a new way of living. So some will, and some won't. So you can say, so what? This is actually something that one of my mentors taught me, and it helped to kind of ease the, the stress of going in and just really hoping, you know what, I'm going to put effort into speaking with this person, and man, I would really like to share Young Living with them. If that's the energy that you're taking into that conversation, it's not going to go well, right? You've got to be showing up, being authentic, and connecting with people, because remember that goal is to have mutually fulfilling conversations and relationships with people that you genuinely like to communicate with. So show up excited to genuinely communicate with somebody, right? And understand that if today is not the day where that person is willing to tell you a problem that they have that you could help them solve with oils, it's okay. So what? It's fine. Some people will say yes. Some people will say no. You really don't need to be bothered by whether or not they do. Ooh, can we put custom fields on the wishlist, like a birthday to add to the contact card? Can I say, Krishana, you always have the best wishlist ideas. I really like that. Alright, so that definitely can go into the wishlist. Alright, so rapport building is another thing that you want to engage with in this relationship building process. So if you're familiar with this acronym, FORD, not the car, it's Family Occupation Recreation Dreams and Goals. These are the things that you are going to be talking about to break the ice, to get to know someone better, to really be asking questions that opens them up. And of course, you get to do the same, really just getting to know people, right? So this is what relationship building looks like. You're adding value, you're showing up, you're being present. You're not doing this because you want to shove oils in someone's face. You're doing this because you genuinely enjoy connecting with people, learning more about them, and seeing if there are ways that you can help them live a better life, right? That's how I want you to show up. Now, the system around this is really simple. I want you to apply the relationship building automation to your contact. And then it's going to give you to-dos. And you just need to do with those to-do, say, it's going to remind you basically what this, this follow-up plan is going to do, is it's going to remind you to maybe pop in on their social media, find something in their feed to like, comment, whatever, right? To engage with them in a public way, go into the DMs, catch up on the conversation that you, you know, had started previously, and add your notes to your Get Oiling system for that contact. And it's basically just going to be reminding you to do this every week until that point of disclosure is reached, until they get to that point where they say, man, you know, I just really wish that I could. Man, you know, it would be really cool if I could do this. Or, you know, I'm really interested in this thing, but I've been struggling with getting it done. When they say one of those things, then you're able to move to the next stage in the system, right? So you're going to follow those to-dos, connect with them regularly, be curious, be interested in what's going on in their lives, because this is something that you enjoy doing. So pay attention and ask great questions. Wake up every day and put this on your vision board. I ask great questions, right? I want to be able to ask better and better and better questions, because that makes for fulfilling and rewarding conversations and relationships, and it will shorten the amount of time in the relationship building phase so that you can more quickly get to the point where that point of disclosure is reached, and you have the opportunity to share. So what adding value looks like from a systems perspective is usually showing up. You're including, you're maybe adding humor if that's, if that's authentic to you. You're being empathetic about things that they're sharing with you. Maybe you're sharing something that's entertaining, informative, again, something that's relevant to them and in context with your relationship, right? So add value in that way. And then as you're doing this, update your notes in the contact manager so that you always know what you did last, what you talked about last, what you want to make sure you're keeping tabs on, right? And then just keep those two ears open for that point of disclosure, okay? Now, we are going to be getting into this in greater detail next week, but because this is the point at which you will be shifting into that consultative shift stage. Let's talk about what a point of disclosure is. So here, we have been in our relationship development phase. We are communicating on a consistent basis. Maybe we're deepening connection in our conversations. We're developing trust. And trust is what affords disclosure. For someone to share or disclose something, they must trust you first. So that's what we're doing in the relationship building phase. So at some point, your friend is going to tell you a problem, a goal, a pain point, something that you know you can help them solve. You just gotta listen for it. And again, some will, some won't, so what? And it might not be today, and it might not be three months from now. Get good at asking good questions. This point of disclosure will come a lot more quickly. Brand yourself as an authority, as an expert. This will come way faster, right? People will identify you as someone who can help, and they will share a problem much more quickly that way. So this, what we're talking about here is the point of disclosure. So I want you to treat this with care. The point of disclosure is essentially, I mean, this, this is, this is somebody basically saying, hey, I trust you. I trust you. We've been here, we've been talking about this, we've been talking about that. I am opening up to you. So please, treat that with care. Take this seriously, and don't pounce with, there's an oil for that, when this happens, because that doesn't honor the trust that was built, right? That smells like opportunism, and that does not keep good relationships. So don't pounce. What we do at this point, and I talk about this more in that, in the next phase, is essentially grabbing our notes and, and doing some research. And then of course, I'll talk about next week, how we approach the opportunity to share. So when they share, you are present. You're empathizing, you're encouraging if it's appropriate. You are not saying, hey, I could show you something. You're not looking for an opportunity to pounce. You are looking to show someone that you are there for them, that you want to help them. You are looking to show someone that you are there for them, that you want to help them. And when they are ready, they're going to tell you what they want your help with. Right? And all you gotta do is just show up consistently, right? Okay, so if you've reached a point of disclosure, what you're going to do is add the consultative shift automation to your contact. That's going to remove all of the to dos from the relationship building phase because now it's on to do something else. And I will be talking about what that looks like on next week's call, right? So part two is where we're going to be talking about what happens during the consultative shift. What are the steps that you follow? How do you approach what happens there? Essentially, all you're doing in, in this stage is doing what your follow-up plan says to do, which is to reach out, connect, maybe post or like and add your notes and listen. That's it, right? And then when we get into next week, I'll talk about what it looks like to move toward an invitation to share. All right, so let's go take a look in a Get Oiling account at our resource bundle and of course, what it would look like to apply, uh, this resource to your contact. So this is our resource bundle. Um, we've got our relationship building automation, consultative shift, sharing to sign up, customer checklist and first 90 days. This is the one we're focusing on today. And, uh, I'll actually go in and show you what's in this automation. First thing it's going to do is tag your lead as Young Living Lead. Then it's going to add this follow-up plan, relationship building. And it's going to, because remember this is cyclical, sometimes you have to return to relationship building. So if you do return to relationship building and you had been in one of these other two, uh, stages, it will remove the to dos from those when you do, right? So this will keep things clean. That's why we're using automations instead of just using follow-up plans. So let's take a look at what is in this relationship building follow-up plan. And you can see that this actually goes on for over a hundred days. Okay? So what we're essentially doing is, excuse me, after our first conversation, we're going to add notes. That's it. We're going to add notes because we just talked to them. Um, and then, uh, we are going to have, uh, what's going to show up is to add the consultative shift automation at the point of disclosure. This is going to stay a to do on your list until you get to that point of disclosure. At which point you could certainly check it off, or you could just go add the, um, consultative shift automation and it'll just remove all of these to dos, uh, from that contact. So once a week, it's going to tell you to go like or react or comment on their social media content and reach out to pick up a conversation and add notes to your system for that contact. And it's just going to tell you to do that once a week, every week for what? A hundred and five days? Yeah. So that's what this looks like. You're going to be in this relationship building stage. It might take you two weeks and then you don't have to worry about the rest of what's here because the automation is going to remove these to dos. Okay, but that's essentially what that looks like. Let's go see what it looks like to actually put this onto a contact. Uh, let me go find, um, me in the system. Here we go. Let's just pretend that I have just added this contact, right? I've added them manually. I called them a Facebook lead because I know this person from Facebook. I'm popping here and say, um, uh, Facebook friends. Uh, let's see, this is somebody who maybe, um, has a table at, um, monthly farm market, uh, makes soaps. I don't know, um, has two kids. So this is background information. I'm going to go ahead and share that. I don't know too much about this person, but this is the little that I know and this is the information that I want to pop in here. Um, I did just chat with this person, so I'm going to go over here and, uh, I'm going to put in, uh, Facebook Messenger. Um, so I started a conversation about, um, about her soaps. Curious about, um, scent profiles and ingredients. And, uh, what other DIYs she might be into. Um, she is interested in learning more about essential oils. But hasn't found a resource she loves yet. Okay, so I did this last night. Let's just say, so that was last night, maybe seven o'clock. I'm going to add that as a past action. This is a thing that I did. Cool. And now I can go in, uh, right up here to the top. This is where we run an automation on this contact. Okay, the relationship building contact, uh, relationship building is the, um, the one that we're going to use, right? I have three of them on here. So I'm going to run relationship building. And now look at all of these to dos. So I did just add notes from my conversation. So I need to go ahead and check that off. And I can't check this off yet. Can't do that because she hasn't shared with me that there's, you know, something, you know, she, she's mentioned generally essential oils, but I clearly need to have more conversation with her, right? So I'm going to keep the conversation going. Maybe if I chat with her tomorrow, uh, then I can pop in here and add something else, you know, again, just in Facebook Messenger. Just keep coming in here and adding notes, uh, as you're having these conversations. From your dashboard, you're going to see what your to dos are. Um, I don't have any for her today, but if I go and I look at tomorrow's to dos, here we go. Um, I've got those to dos here and actually in a week, um, you'll see, I'm going to be reminded to just pop over here uh, to, uh, like, react, comment and pick up a conversation. And of course, when I do, I can go and check that off. All right. Uh, so that's essentially what that looks like. Now, if we get to the point where the consultative shift, uh, is warranted, right? We've gotten to a point of disclosure. Um, that is the point at which I can pop right over here and I can put in consultative shift. I'll run that automation. And now, and you can actually see that Young Living Lead was added here from relationship building. And now I have my to dos, which again, we'll get into what these are next week and how you can prep. But you have a different set of to dos that are applied here. And so imagine doing this for all of the people that you are communicating with on social media. You will not drop the ball with a lead because you're going to get the reminders to do what you need to do, right? And all you need to focus on from that point forward is getting good at asking questions and listening for what that point of disclosure sounds like coming from that person, right? So with this example that I just provided, uh, where she, um, she said that, uh, that she's interested in learning more about oils. And you know, you can mention, you know, hey, that's something that I absolutely nerd out about. Would love to talk with you more about it. I'm not trying to turn that into a meeting. I'm keeping it casual because we don't really know each other that well yet. That's not enough for me to get a lifelong customer for Young Living. And that's not enough time for me to build trust with her. So I'm going to keep returning as that relationship building, uh, process is going. And, and maybe I jumped the gun and I'm like, hey, I could show you all about oils. Would you like to check out Young Living? And she didn't handle it well, like, or she didn't respond to it the way I wanted to. I need to return back to the drawing board, uh, with relationship building, right? I need to go back here. And when I run that automation, it is going to remove those other to dos that I had and take me right back to where I was before, which is sometimes what we need to do because sometimes that's what relationships warrant is us going back to the beginning and working on the basics. All right. So, um, if you have questions, if you could please make sure that we get those into the Q and A so that we don't miss them. Um, let me see. Donna says, I'm very new to Get Oiling. I joined looking for a system to enroll interested prospects, uh, but I'm still trying to figure that it out. Is there an opportunity video for people? Um, so like a Young Living opportunity video. We don't have one in Get Oiling, but I absolutely believe there are folks in our community who do, uh, and would be willing to share. So if you will go to our Facebook group, um, and, uh, and maybe just post in there, you know, hey, does anybody have an opportunity video, Young Living opportunity video that they love? Uh, then I bet you, you're going to find something, uh, that'll work really well for you. Let me see. Um, you don't need to add a next to do since it's already done. That's right, Alison. Yeah, that's, that's what the follow-up plans are for. They streamline the process so that you have the same to dos for every contact of that category and every contact in that particular stage. Yeah, Sheila, if it, Sheila, if you need to go back to relationship building, you just add that relationship building automation again. That's right. No matter what stage you're at in the process, you go back to that relationship building. I mean, obviously you're, you're only going to be in the consultative shift phase, right? Where you are, um, gearing up to and presenting the opportunity to, to view Young Living. And then you're in the presentation, uh, up to the, the closing stage. Let's see, didn't know you could add to past actions. Oh, yes. Oh my goodness, yes. Yeah, that background information is fantastic for adding notes that you want to be able to visually access, um, just at the ready. So basic background info, profile stuff, like what I put here, right? How did I meet them? What are some of the key things that I need to remember about them? Husband's name is this, has a dog named that, whatever those things are, um, put those here. But the substance of your conversations, those are all going to be under past actions and you can put in the time, the date, and you can even give yourself a to do after the fact. Now you don't have to give yourself a to do after the fact, uh, necessarily, if you're following the system, uh, that, that we've put together here, uh, because your, uh, your follow-up plans, those automations are managing for you. Uh, those are going to give you all the to dos that you need. Past actions searchable. That's a good question. I've never tried that. I don't know that we have a search feature for that and that sounds like a wishlist item. We, they are filterable, right? So you can go over here to filters and this will make it easier to narrow down. So if you want to only see like my Facebook Messenger and, uh, meetings, uh, then I'm going to filter for that. And, and then you can actually see what that looks like. So in that way, yeah. So it's not like keyword searchable, uh, but functionally it is searchable by filter, um, which I, I think is, is pretty close. If you're thinking about like how you would have communicated with them. But I do, I do actually like the idea of being able to search your notes for a keyword. I think that would be an interesting addition to the, um, the wishlist. Let's see, how do I find, uh, my prospect with tags? Great question, Julie. Uh, so your tags, um, you want to make sure first that you are clear on your strategy for tags, right? So for instance, um, there's, um, I added manually was added by the system because I added this person manually. If this person had opted in on a landing page, it would indicate where they opted in. Some of these things are automatic. But I put in, when I created this contact, I put in Facebook lead. Right? You can put in whatever you want here. Just make sure that you're being consistent about it. So don't have Facebook and Facebook lead, right? So use one or the other, just to keep your life simple. Um, you know, depending on what all you offer, if there's more than just Young Living, if maybe you're a coach or you do AFT or something like that, you may differentiate, uh, when you're creating tags for these contacts. If someone is an AFT lead versus whether they're a Young Living lead, right? Uh, so I would, um, you know, be thinking about that. And then when you're creating the contact, you can add these tags. And then once you have tags on your contacts, uh, then you can actually go to your contact list. You can click filters right here and then you can filter for tags, right? So I can put in, um, Facebook lead here and I'm going to maybe exclude Facebook leads, uh, who are maybe also brand partners. I don't know if that's something that you wanted to do. So we can do, um, search for this and then, but, but exclude these. Um, you have a number of different ways that you can filter though. So yeah, just make sure with tags that you are, um, clear on your purpose for them. And you're, you're applying them consistently. So there are groups of people with the appropriate tags. Uh, and, and then you can go in and filter for that tag in your contact filtering. All right, Cynthia says, I'm looking to start sharing, but I need help understanding my initial landing page. How can I see, uh, how can I see what they are getting? Yeah. So there is a view option. So let me pop right over here and actually show you. Um, if you want to show a landing page, all you have to do is come over to your landing pages, find the one that you want to, um, to share. And you can just click the view button and it will take you to the published version of this, um, of this landing page that you're offering, right? So, um, so then what you're able to do, if we just come right back over here, you can also click copy link and this is what you would use to share. Right? So if you wanted to share your landing page with someone, uh, you would just go to copy link for that. And if you want to see it, you click view and you can see what they see. All right, Alison says, uh, can you show an example of how or why you would use two different tags for birthday? Um, well, I, can, can you tell me a little bit more about the question, like kind of what you're, you're looking for here? Cause I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand.
Be based on Chris Shonda's, uh, question, because I had replied to her last one saying like, can you put on, could you put a month, well, two tags, one for the month, January, February, March, whatever, and then another one for the day of the month? Cause then you could narrow it down with tags pretty easily if you needed to find somebody on a specific day.
Oh yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. So later we'll go back over to the contact and we can play around with that. Um, so if I want to, I'm going to manage the tags for this contact, I'm going to go to edit. Um, today I found out that this contact was born on February tag and then eight. Yeah. Right? And so then if I want to, if I'm going to go save here, um, then I can go into my contacts and filter. And I'm going to filter for February and find everyone who has a February birthday, which could be a useful use case if you just want to be shouting out everybody for birthdays. Uh, but if today is the eighth, then you can go in and you can add the month and then also add the day, right? And this, this would be a, a bit of work, right? But if, if you're doing this consistently, so if you are prospecting and while you are, you know, kind of going through that process of getting to know somebody, if their, if their birthday is published on Facebook, then, um, you know, you could easily just pop right in and add, uh, add a tag there. And that, that's definitely a, a workaround. Um, yeah.
Yeah. And one, one other quick thing with that too, if you jump to the next one, on that filter screen, I don't know if you still have that open up, but there was a little radio button above the tags box. If you pick February and eighth, you also have to, if you just want people on February eighth, you have to click the all. Otherwise it's going to match anyone who has any February tag and any eighth tag, which could be March eighth or September eighth or something like that. So you'd want to toggle that to all. So it's kind of, it's kind of like and February and eight. I want to have both of those. So.
Yes.
For using it for that.
Yes, thank you for that. That's very important. Or you might just get, uh, you might get results that you don't want. Yeah. Okay. Um, I think we got that. Okay, um, someone has signed up for a membership in a vault with recurring monthly payments. They automatically get an email reminder of their upcoming payment a few days in advance. Good question. Do they?
Don't. Right now, there may be some way on Stripe of configuring that, but, um, Get Oiling itself doesn't send the, uh, notice.
Got you.
It does send a receipt once the payment is done.
Okay. Um, yeah, so the, the reason why you would want to, uh, separate those two tags, Alison, so doing, um, the, the date and the month, uh, would be because you, it's super specific, right? So, um, you don't want to have a tag for every day of the year. Uh, but you can have a tag for numbers of the month and you can have a tag for each month. And so it's just, it's going to be a lot easier to manage. Um, so, and like, and, and again, you might choose to like do a, the, where are my February birthdays? And if you were going in and just putting February eight as one tag, then you're not going to be able to easily filter for all your February people, right? It'll, it'll just, it's a little cleaner to manage that way, um, if that is what you want to do and, um, and that is my actual birthday. All right, what else do we have here? All right. So you guys have your, your resource bundle. Fantastic. Do we have any other questions? I'm just looking to see if we have anything else in the chat here that we missed. I'm really excited to hear, um, you guys' thoughts about, uh, what you're going to do with this next. Um, are you going to go start having some conversations today and applying this automation to your contacts? Did you know you could do that and it would be that simple? Like now you just get to show up and you have your to dos when it's time to do the thing. And it's so much easier to manage that way. We do have, uh, just a little bit more time, uh, if you guys, uh, have any questions, if you have any requests for reviews um, or want to, uh, to chat through something, we do have a little bit of space for that here. Remember we will be back next week where we're going to be talking about the consultative shift phase. And that is essentially what's happening when you are shifting from, I'm getting to know you to, I'm about to make you an offer to check something out, right? So that shift into, I'm putting my, my consultation hat on. Uh, and, uh, and I'm going to start approaching this in a very specific way. So we're going to be getting into that next week. Following week is going to be what it looks like, uh, once they say yes to your offer to share. Uh, so that's going to be the sharing to sign up phase. So that's what it looks like to. Uh, so that's going to be the Sharing to Sign Up phase. So that's what it looks like to set up the share, uh, conduct the share, and then of course, close and get your, uh, your new customer started. All right, Jenna says, I'm gonna start using it with my Run Through Rank Three with Richard Brook. Awesome. We'll make it easier if I can get it figured out. Yeah. Um, oh, and by the way, um, I forget who asked the question earlier about having a, a, a great opportunity video. Um, if you guys know about Richard Bliss Brook, uh, you, you might know that he's got some really great opportunity videos and some phenomenal systems, uh, for sharing those. And they work beautifully with Get Oiling. So, uh, definitely worth checking out. Uh, he's got some really great stuff. His training is absolutely classic. Like he, he knows the stuff that has worked since the beginning of, the beginning days of this industry, and it has, um, it is really, uh, morphed well into this social media digital era. He's got fantastic work. Fully, fully love his stuff. All right. Um, yeah, Cynthia, um, let us know what you need help with setting up. Uh, and if you, like, if it's something that we can help with quickly here on this call, that's great. Um, if not, that's okay too. Just pop your, actually, if you wanna chat, just raise your hand here and zoom, and we can, we can just talk. Uh, maybe get a little strategy in place for what to focus on first. There are other opportunities to get live help as well. Let me show you real quick. If you have, um, you know, if you feel overwhelmed at any point, and this is for anyone invitation to do this, head over to the Success Academy. Get help from a real person, this little one right here. And there are a lot of different ways to connect with us. The Facebook group is a favorite for a lot of folks. Our team is really active in there. But this, if you're, especially if you're newer to Get Oiling, Pam has these calls here, these Get Oiling Group Help Calls. You would not, you will not believe how much you can get done in a single call with Pam on one of these calls. And this is free to you as, uh, as a new member of our community. So definitely take advantage of this. If you've got something where you feel stuck and you just really need a person that's there kinda holding your hand, uh, through the process. Okay, let me see. Um, Cynthia, I'm gonna chat with you, and Krishana, I'm gonna answer your question here in just a second. Hey Cynthia, how can we help?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I, well, I, yeah, I've, I've been with Pam calls. I've been here for like four months. I'm just stuck. I'm almost sixty years old. I'm just really at the ground zero still, haven't not started anything. And I'm trying, I'm trying to go social media and talk about the ancient oils. I have a vault that I built up. I'm stuck with trying to get my vault set up. I need to get my name out of, um, GoDaddy, which is called Antiprep Nation, and get my name over here to the ghetto site initially. And then I'm trying to get, I'm trying to go to TikTok, do a social media, a lot of blitz, but then lead them to my landing page, which is Ancient Oil Landing Page. From that Ancient Oil Landing Page, I'm trying to get there where I can start going to my Young Living eventually. And so I, which I'm trying, it's so big, I don't know how to start it. And I'm gonna have to get that in.
Yeah, so, um, the Ancient Oils Landing Page, what is it offering?
Um, the Ancient Oil, I, I'm giving them, uh, just education about ancient oils. It's free. It's a free thing. I'm just, I'm leading them to the Ancient Oil London, the Vault for free education about how the oils work. And then from the end of those, at the end of that landing page, at the end of that, um, that, that vault, I will let them know they can go into Young Living and then just start buying the product.
Perfect. Okay, so you're gonna be putting in this vault, um, in, in, in these lessons, you're gonna be putting links, like your links to go and purchase these oils, right?
Right, at the end of it, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, I love that.
This is a free, this is a free vault of just learning, because no one know about the oils. I'm trying to educate them. Which we, before we used to get this for free at Young Living, anyway, they don't do it as much. So this is like my freebie, this vault.
Yeah, yeah, I love that. Okay, yeah. So, so what you would do, uh, is, and, and I wouldn't necessarily wait to the end of this class to do this. I would do it throughout. And, and essentially what you're gonna do, uh, and I'll just, I'll put one right here. Um, essentially what you're gonna do is, is create what we call a Leaf Link. Uh, and, and, and so we're gonna actually link off to, uh, you know, to, to product or to, uh, you know, to get your discount or something to that effect. So when I click, um, what is it? More, where? More miscellaneous, here we go, more miscellaneous. It's these three dots over here on the right-hand side. There is this little leaf, uh, that we, we call it a Leaf Link, uh, colloquially here. Uh, but this is inserting a Young Living link with your member number attached. So I'm gonna click this. And then just going over to the, um, the Young Living, um, Young Living website. You go and you find the product that you want to link to, um, I believe, here we go, here's Oils of Ancient Scripture, right? I'm gonna copy this link here. And then back over here, I'm gonna paste that right here. And now, we can say, um, I'm gonna change the style, and I'm gonna change this to where it says, um, in the text, order oils of ancient scripture. And so when somebody clicks this, you're, like, if they aren't a customer yet, they are going to be your customer when they click this, go purchase, right? So I would do this throughout. So just make sure that you've got that set up throughout these lessons, because you are giving it away for free. And so we've, we got that covered. Now we gotta make sure when they go to their, to your landing page, that they're being added to this vault. So what we'll do here is we'll go to our landing page. There we go, perfect. You've got one. And if we go to Settings, uh, we are going to add to Vaults. So they're gonna automatically be added to a vault. Uh, and here I'm gonna say, um, check your email for instructions on how to access uh, this content.
Okay, thank you.
I look forward to working with you, right? Um, the campaign, did you create a campaign for this? Is it, uh, that's the Vault Welcome Campaign?
Yeah, then, yeah, there's the campaign, but I haven't been, I think I also do videos, a presentation, and then the link.
Got you.
I'm not gonna add that. Pam was, Pam set that up for me.
Got you. Okay. So we've got our ancient oils, uh, we're gonna tag them so that we know, um, where they came in. So it's our Ancient Oils Lead. Um, oh, you're gonna send them to a video? Great. Um, and we're also gonna add them to the Vault, right?
Okay, yes.
Okay? Um, or, I mean, does this page allow them to get into the Vault? Okay, we don't have anything here yet. You're gonna put the video here. Great. Oh, that's great. Um, no, this is fine. So it sounds like, um, once you've got the video done, and I think in the video you're going to say, you know, welcome, I'm so excited to have you here. I've just sent you an email. Um, in that email, you'll get instructions on how to access the course that I've put together. Uh, you know, hope you enjoy it. I'm here to help you on your journey. Talk to you soon, right? Like, that's more or less the video you would create. Um, and you're gonna use that like a confirmation page. And, um, and, you know, just confirming to them that they have, uh, you know, begun the first step on a great journey. Uh, and, and their instruction, their call to action is go check your email. Because what's gonna be sent to them is that Vault Confirmation, right? That's that, um, but that's attached to the Vault.
Okay, so they'll see, they, they get this page here. This, this page you get here, this landing page.
Mm-hmm, this is what you share.
And then when they hit that, they'll go right into the, the course, to learn, right?
Yes, so what they will do, the way that this would work, um, is, um, is we would, just going from the viewing option here, they put in their information. On the next page, they're gonna see that video message from you.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Right?
Okay.
And they're going to be, at the very same time, sent an email that says, here's how you access the course. And that's something, that's, and that's the thing, because we added them to the Vault. So when they put in their information here, they're being added to the Vault. The Vault sends that welcome email that says, click here to go set up your password, et cetera. Um, and so that, that part is handled. So at this point, all you need to do is make that video and upload it here, uh, to your videos and Get Oiling, and pop it into that page that Pam created for you. And just make sure that that page says what you wanted to say. Um, and then, once you have that done, uh, get in touch with our team. Uh, Colin and Julia are both geniuses with this, with getting, you know, the domains moved over from GoDaddy and all that kinda stuff. Um, way over my head. These guys know how to do it, and, uh, and they can help you with that. Uh, and so getting that moved over, and then all you gotta do is share this page. And then
So I'd be, so put the video now, I'd be ready to go at that point, huh? Because I didn't know, I wasn't
Put the video, yeah, yeah, put the, get the video and, and put it onto that page that Pam helped you make. And then get in touch with the team, uh, so that you can get that domain moved over. Then with that new domain, you're able to go out there and start sharing this as your, you know, y- your domain with this page on it.
Because I have the, I have the four lessons too that I, I, I ordered from you. I'm just trying to get the basics set up before I start using the lesson to help me build my whole site and everything. So I have that four training thing from the, the convention that I have, I need to start.
Yeah.
I need to go with that as well.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I am very proud of the progress you've made. You should be as well. And, uh, yeah, look forward to helping you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Of course, of course. All right, Donna, I see your hand up. Um, let me know in the chat if you need, uh, help here real quickly before we, um, head out for the day. I'm happy to, to help with, with anything if you, if you need it, just let me know. Okay, cool. Your hand's just up high. Awesome. Oh, you guys, um, if you're here on the call live, um, Amanda posted, uh, opportunity videos from Richard Bliss Brook. They're, they're right here. You should, you should go click that link and save it. They're really good. All right, you guys, we'll be back here same time next week where we will be talking about what it looks like to respond to opportunity in your conversations and to do so in a way that retains and grows your friendships, uh, deepens your connections, and of course, has people saying yes to learning about Young Living. Look forward to seeing you guys then. Until then, have a great week, everybody.